Right.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Think we got it.
All right. Call the Williamsville Community and School District Board of Education Meeting, Monday, August 12th. Billy Ross.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call was here, Brian, here.
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 Lisa.
Here.
Jenny.
Here. There'll be a few kids like that tomorrow.
Do everybody have time for public comment?
Nope.
Item number five, discussion. Mister Governor, it is a pleasure to see you again.
Good to see y'all, y'all again. Good to see you, Brian. I think you weren't here when I was here before. So I'm Vic Zimmerman with ISB. We're gonna do your soup search for you again. You've all been through it, except for Brian, so you'll have to get him up to speed along the way. So very good. I've got Matt Brew with me tonight. He started working with ISB several weeks ago, so he's gonna assist in the search, kinda like I assisted Trish in the search last time. So we can pass these around. There's one for everybody.
Is Trish going with you?
Uh, she is, but she stepped back a little bit. She's just doing screenings and those types of things.
Do you have enough?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so you should recognize this. What our goal for tonight is to go through the final announcement of vacancy for this year's search. We'll talk about the timeline. I got a few questions for you to see if there's anything you want to change from last time's announcement of vacancy. And then we'll get rolling. Your position is actually already on the ISB and ISPA jobbing. And we've had several inquiries about the position, so I think we're gonna be in good shape for the search this time around. So we'll take a look at the announcement of vacancy. We'll start on the front page, which is the page with logo on it. So over to the, so I've highlighted the pieces of the announcement of vacancy that I've modified from last time. Okay, so over here on the left-hand side, we've got an updated list of financials. I got those from Rolf on this weekend, and I was able to update those, so I appreciate that. Also, was able to update Brian in there as a new board member. But as we're looking at that bottom-left-hand corner, let's make sure that everybody's name is spelled correctly. Or if you want to be called something other than what's listed there, let me know, and I can make that modification.
Here's a service for Chad, Jenny, and I. And Brian's isn't.
All right, so that was the other thing. I needed to check the years of service, so. So what would they be?
One for us three, and then Brian, how many years?
Five.
Five.
And I'm only seven, not nine. Lisa, are you ready?
All right, so Brian's five?
Yes.
Lisa's six?
Six.
April, seven? Brittany, one?
Chad, one.
Jennifer, one, sorry.
What's?
Three for me.
Yep, so that tells me that I must have updated them, and I added one again, so that's why we're off by that much. So there we go. All right, so if you remember last time, we did a community-wide board faculty and staff survey with the ideal characteristics, so those will stay the same. I didn't highlight those, because those bullet points will stay the same. Candidate requirements, so last time we had previous teaching and administrative experience required. Superintendent or other central office experience preferred, but not required. And then no reference to residency in the district. So is that how you guys want it this time around?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is it not typical to put how many years of experience you require, so like administrative experience? Would you not put five, 10 years, depending on level of experience we thought needed?
Yep, so we typically don't get that granular, because the idea is we want to maximize the number of potential applicants we have for the position. So if, if in your guys' mind, you're hoping for somebody who's had five years of being a principal or some kind of administrative experience, you want to keep that in mind when you're interviewing. I would recommend that we don't put it in the announcement of vacancy, because that may limit the potential applicants we get. So that would be something that when you're interviewing your candidates, if you get it down to two, and one has 10 years of experience, and one has two years of experience, that may play into your final selection process. That make sense?
Yeah, I guess. If you don't get candidates that have the experience you want, do you repost, repost with a new timeline, or?
Yeah, so.
So if we get several candidates with one year, I don't think any of us want one-year administrative stuff, especially to myself.
Sure.
So I would say send it back out and cast the net again.
So the way it works, so I'll continue to be in touch with Chad as we get closer to the closing date on the number of applicants we have. And then he can, we'll have a conversation about it. If he thinks we're good on the number of applicants that I'm gonna bring to you guys, then we'll go ahead and go with it. Again, just like last year, we're there till you hire a suit, so. You know, if you don't hire a suit this time around, we'll repost it in the second wave, and we'll be with you till you find one.
And if we have multiple applicants, you're gonna pick the best.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So just like, so just like last year, so we're hoping to get, you know, 10 to 12 applicants, and then we'll screen those down, do a paper screen, myself and Matt, one of the other consultants will do a paper screen. We'll screen it down to those candidates that we feel best fit your ideal candidate profile. And then we will do Zoom screen interviews with those candidates for 25 to 30 minutes. After those Zoom screens, then we'll narrow it down to up to six candidates, so we wouldn't bring you any more than six. I think last year it was less than six. Yeah, three. So hopefully we can get more this time around, but we'll, it just takes one, just takes the right one, when it's all said and done, so. So that's how that plays out, and then bring you up to six candidates to interview. Go through the process of the first-round interviews, second round, those types of things.
Are we obligated to interview the ones you bring forward, or do we have a screening opportunity on those candidates?
Yep, so you hire us to do the screening. So when I come to your meeting on October 21st, which needs to be a special meeting, I will have set up the first round of interviews for you. So then you'll interview the first round, and then, you know, if you don't like them, then sort of, I think you'll like them. Good for hoping for. All right, so no changes to the candidate requirements. So I'm not hearing any. All right, next page, same side. Close date, closing day will be October 9th, so today's the 12th, August 12th. So it's still a couple months until we close, so plenty of time, seven more weeks to get our applicant pool up there. All right, we'll go to the next page. Okay. Nothing changed over here in the far-right-hand panel, except for the change in the dates to 2025. Starting on July 1st, 2025, no changes to the total compensation package. So starting in, starting after January 1st, 2025, districts that do a search, or I think it's any governmental body that posts a position to hire somebody, does have to include information on their salary and benefit package. So we're still awaiting legal counsel suggestion to the executive search team on what that exactly means for the announcement of vacancy. It could mean we have to put a range of salary in there. It could mean we just need to put the minimum salary in there. We're not sure yet. You guys aren't required to do that, but you certainly can do it if you'd like to put a minimum salary in there or a range.
Did we do that last time?
No.
Where'd that come from?
So that's from the Fair, Illinois Fair Wage Act through the legislature and our esteemed governor, who decided that we needed to have that in there.
And that starts January 1st, correct?
Yes, so you don't have to do it.
So we don't have to go right now?
Yep, so I wouldn't, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. So I would, I would recommend not to do it until you have to do it. Because that's another potential limiter of applicants.
Now, when you do your screening, you talk to them, do you share that verbally, or?
No.
Okay, so they would come here to do an interview, and then potentially find out that the salary wasn't compatible with what their expectation is?
Yeah, so every school district in the state is required to post their administrative compensation schedule on their website, so they can look back and see, like, what Tim was making last year, and kinda know, this is kinda what I should expect to get here. Sometimes I'll get questions about, you know, what do you think they're gonna pay us? Well, we haven't had that conversation. But you can probably look back to their prior suit and kinda see what they paid them, and it's probably gonna be similarly. I mean, pretty much gone are the days where you can hire a new superintendent and expect to pay them a lot less than your retiring superintendent.
True.
It's also right now a buyer's market for superintendents, so, you know, the best ones out there are calling for bigger salaries than maybe most districts are used to paying, but when they're up for multiple jobs, they can certainly do that. So you just gotta know that going in when you're looking for a suit. Okay, then the same page, far-right-hand side, right-hand panel. Application deadline, October 9th. October 21st would be a special board meeting. I'll just need to confirm that with Rolf and Chad to make sure that works for you. It's at that board meeting, I came to that board meeting last year, where, and we actually did a mock interview, which we won't do, which we won't do this year unless you wanna do another one, but I'm not sure that that makes sense to pay for that again. But we'll go over the, I'll have all the information on the candidates for you. Hand you out the binders with all of their application packages and letters of reference and all those types of things, so you'll have all that. We'll again talk about that first round of interviews, what it looks like, since you've just been through it. It shouldn't take a huge amount of time, same type of thing as last year. So then after that meeting, board interviews, first and second round, I've scheduled in about a month there for you to do first and second round interviews. Prior to that, October 21st meeting, I'll know how many candidates I'm gonna bring, so I'll contact Chad and Rolf and ask them, how do you want to set up the interviews? Do you want it to be, you know, if we have six candidates, do you want to be two nights of three each, or all on a Saturday with all six candidates? We don't need, we're not gonna decide that today, because we don't know how many candidates will we bring to you, but. When I have a better idea of that, I'll contact you guys, and we'll figure out the dates of interviews and how we wanna work that.
When you present the candidates on the 21st, is that open to the public, who the candidates are?
So that's all in closed session.
Closed session.
Yep, so one of, so we're, at the School Board Association, we're very cognizant of confidentiality, so that's like our, you know, our number one, one of our, you know, number one philosophies in executive searches, that we want people to be able to apply and know that it's in confidence. And we tell the candidates that your name will not get out to the public, because we're doing it in closed session. The board is interviewing you in closed session, so the only way it can get out is if they tell somebody, or if somebody in closed session tells somebody.
Yeah, you wouldn't want your current school to know you're out searching.
Exactly, and that's why.
You know, sometimes I find the information that has to go into open session sometimes.
Correct.
You question that. Yeah, okay, makes sense.
So, so then once you, once you complete your first round of interviews, you get the second round interviews, then we tell the candidates, you'll need to inform your board, if you haven't already, that you're a finalist for the Williamsville position. Because at that point, you guys may be calling references and calling around, and so we're looking out, so it's not confidential once people get to the finals. Finals. And then, so the suggested hire date would be December 9th, which I believe is your December board meeting. I'll have to confirm that to make sure that's the correct date. You could also have a special board meeting before that December 9th meeting, if you decide to do that, a special board meeting for some reason. Could be just to hire the superintendent as well, so that would be up to you on how you wanna handle that. And then the new superintendent begins on July 1st, 2025. Any questions?
If we happen to pick up someone who is not a current suit, could they start mid-year?
You can certainly ask them about that, but the likelihood that they're, so let's say they're a principal, the likelihood that they're gonna leave that district and come to you mid-year is probably not likely, because they're kinda putting that district in a bind. But you can certainly have a conversation with them, since you do have an interim, so.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anything, anything that I need to know? Any new developments?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, man.
Tomorrow's the first day of school.
Yeah, it is. It's the first day of school for a lot of districts, so we'll see how that plays out. All right, so I'll send this to production then tomorrow morning. It'll go out via email to our 70, our database of over 7,500 potential applicants across the state and the country who are interested in the possibility of being a superintendent, or moving districts to be a superintendent in a different district, and I'll be in touch with Chad and Rolf on candidates, as we, number of candidates as we come through, and then I'll, closer to the time when it closes, we'll see, you know, what shape we're in, and then we'll make some decisions on interview dates, so. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, great to see you all.
Great to see you. Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you.
That's a good, that's a good start to school.
Brian, I have this. You can go through with it, but that's the packet, their process.
Kinda gives you, yeah, it gives you an idea on their process and.
Overview of everything that we do.
So what we ended up doing last year, just kinda quickly bringing it up to speed, is we had a survey that was sent out to the public, parents, whether students, also teachers, board members, and basically it was the traits that we were looking for in a superintendent. So what they're doing, when they, when they're doing their initial interviews, people that do not meet those traits, they're basically weakening those out, as to not waste our time.
Right.
So. It was a, actually, a pretty good process. All right, any more discussion on five? Item number six.
I'll make a little hour for the second one, yes.
I'll second.
Call Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
And I'm in. Item number six, administrative reports.
Uh, I've nearly completed the S R 3 grant. I'm expecting to submit it this week. You have an email from Adam Dubit. Adam is in need of a vehicle. He seems to think that he can get it for the high twenties or low thirties to transport some kids. I'm not confident that a non-bus vehicle will be approved by the S R 3 grant. So I would recommend purchasing that vehicle if he thinks he needs it. The first day of school with the teachers went awesome. I think it went really well. Zach did a great job during the welcome-back ceremony. You got a great group of teachers, great employees, the foundation of the district is really solid. You'll, I'm confident you'll have some really good candidates that will want to apply. I did talk to Vic a little bit, as he mentioned, on Saturday. I'm really excited for all of you and for the district as a whole to be picking a new leader. What I would also encourage you to do is, once you get a candidate employed, is maybe have a a meet-the-supernance night forum, where you have the entire community come in and meet the new superintendent. Russell sent me an email today telling me that we had a coil on an RTU go out. He thinks it's gonna be about $3,000 to replace it. There's plenty of money and capital projects to fix it.
Is this one of the new vehicles from one, four, five years ago?
It's, what'd he say? It was in the bomb room, bomber's room or something?
Bomb TV studio.
Yeah.
The old office area over there.
I do not know if that is a new RTU or not. I could find that out for you tomorrow and email it out.
Just curious, I think that was quite a while, adult safety.
Right.
You know, maybe most of the units were.
Sure. I will ask him tomorrow, see if it's still under warranty. There's a way that, you know, we can get it replaced under a warranty, and then I'll let everybody know tomorrow. What is your feeling about purchasing this vehicle?
Do we have funds?
Pardon me?
Do we have funds?
Yeah, there's money in reserve. I mean, honestly, we can't afford it, but it's something that we have to have, because it involves special ed kids. So it would put the Transportation Department in a real bind if we didn't do it. That's it, Zach?
Are we going to, we're using transportation money on that, or are we using S R 3 money on that?
Uh, we'll have to use transportation money on it.
Until S R 3 comes to.
I don't think S R 3 is gonna approve it. The reason why is the S R 3 2024 grant had already been approved for a bus, an electric bus. So when that grant rolled over into 2025, we lost $40,000 out of that grant, because it has to be dedicated to loss of learning. So that leaves us, I don't know, like $140,000 and change. I can get two buses for that. And I'm confident that will be approved, because, you know, a one-electric bus, which was about the price of two of these, had been approved. Now, they might surprise me and tell me no, but I think I can get it passed.
Okay.
And we get those two buses, diesel buses, through, getting them a grant, the electric buses?
Yes.
So Rolf, for the, for the vehicle that Adam was proposing to buy, the two gas-powered activity buses, they wouldn't serve that purpose?
No, and the reason why is you cannot use a activity bus on a regular route. It's against school code. Now, you can use a car, and I don't understand that, as long as a licensed bus driver drives it. For example, when I was with District 150, we drove a student all the way from Peoria to the only school for the blind in Jacksonville in a car, so.
So the vehicle he's looking at has special signals and other things, that's?
Oh, it's just a regular, my understanding is it's a regular old traverse.
So we're gonna trade it in, or what?
We have to sell it in a sealed bid. So.
Any other questions?
Well, just a note, I have six listed twice, so I call that 6A with my title.
I'm sorry?
We had six listed twice. I called administrative report 6A.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're on the same page later.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Zach, first floor report.
As Rolf said, we had a really nice first day back. Very productive. As you saw, the theme is back to Williamsville schools, our students for the future. It was very positive and focused on what we can do to move forward, creating a positive climate and culture with strong communication and shared autonomy. After talking to the teachers, we really crammed a lot into the day. It was more like a week and one day. We were very, very productive, looking at the evaluations and talking to teachers. Everyone felt really positive going into the week. For the first time in my ten years here, I was able to unite our Facebook, our email, our webpage, and our all-call, so that our messaging was across the board, equal for all of our parents and communities, so that felt very nice going in there as well. Our projected enrollment numbers, pre-K AM looks now 14, pre-K full-day 14, kindergarten 21, first grade 20, second grade 22, third grade 16, fourth grade 18, fifth grade 17, sixth grade 25, seventh grade 14, eighth grade 25, ninth grade 21, and 10th grade, we're looking at maybe 27, 11th grade 21, and 12th grade 25. So ultimately, we're about ready to hit 300 for our enrollment. And in my tenure here, that's, we're amazingly consistent. You know, we feel like people are moving away, or maybe enrollment numbers are gonna be much lower, but I would tell you in my, in my tenure, this will be my 11th year, we're always right around that 300 mark. So we're looking good for the school year. Our school leadership team met to discuss our school improvement goals for the year. They revolve around academic ELA and math improvement, improving overall communication among stakeholders in our district, and implementing an SEL program, that's kind of the broad strokes of the school improvement team's mission for the year. We set goals and deadlines for the year, and we're feeling really good about being able to accomplish those. One of the biggest changes today to discuss as a staff was we are putting our flex month schedule gently to rest, and we are now moving on to what we would call an innovation hour on our Wednesdays. So on a full-day week on Wednesdays, as opposed to having two hours in the morning, I refer to as flex, and an hour in the afternoon that was flex, now we're gonna maximize instructional time, focusing on making sure our kids are getting quality seat time in classrooms. There will be an hour in the afternoon on Wednesdays that's still referred to as our innovation hour. So they will be in classes all day long, every day, except for on Wednesdays, a full-day week. On a full-day week, it'll be referred to as innovation hour from 1:00 to 2:00. That's when our pathway leaves, we'll have students in their own classrooms, we'll be able to talk about career projects, still making sure that we're pursuing those passion projects, that students are getting their intern hours and, you know, maybe getting out in the field to pursue their passions, and also orchestrating some interventions for students, because the few things that were good about flex, we wanted to make sure we maintained while still getting kids back in the classroom and eliminating some of that free passing period on account of poor student behavior.
So they don't have independent time, they're still with instructors?
Right.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes.
So if, they're supposed to go to their pathways, which is fine, but what if, like, for example, I use my, I asked them how to get caught up with math, with math, and needs to talk to Mr. Maan.
Yes.
Can she go see Mr. Maan, or does she have to go to her pathway?
That's one of the reasons we retained it as well. So the pathway that you can sign her out, or she's not needed for a pathway activity, she can still go back near mention of her skill development time with Mr. Maan.
Do we offer, do we offer any kind of a study hall?
That's how it will serve as sort of a purpose, or the study hall for students.
That's what I understand on that one day, but is that the only day they would have, like, a study hall to do homework?
We haven't had a study hall for, what, 15 years?
I guess my concern would only be is, you know, kids that are in athletics that are going, you know, right after school, ensuring that they have, they're not doing their homework at 1:00 o'clock at night.
But I can tell you, many teachers give, I know I do, I give time in class, they won't get finished with the assignment in the class time, but they get a really good start, and they have a chance to ask questions about it.
When we have noticed students who are particularly in a study hall, we've done some innovative study skill class. When we have noticed students who are in particular need of study hall, we've done some, some innovative study skill classes for kids to be able to have that hour.
Like a cut out a PE to go do?
If a student has a full schedule, they can be, um.
Excuse me, go work, like on a study hall, go work somewhere else.
Yes.
Well, and sometimes too, you know, I've approached the PE department or. Usually the PE department and be like, I really need this kid to come in and make up this test. Can I tell them about a PE during my prep hour? And everybody around him works well with each other to work thing out.
And in one of our meetings today, Jana left, where I think we'll continue to be on that PE hour, these are some study skill purposes, so most definitely.
Okay, great.
Um, so that's the innovation hour and I'll show you that bell schedule in a minute. Um, culture committee update, just wanted you to know that every other week we'll be meeting with a, a culture committee to re-focus on positivity and open communication among staff members. And our culture committee meeting went really well today as well. Um, the bell schedule, which I asked to start a copy. This was a team effort over the summer, once we decided that we were going to move toward this innovation hour as opposed to having the two hours of flex in the morning. Called in some key players, stakeholder, teachers to come in and work on a bell schedule, cause nobody knows. Better pain points uh of, of the daily schedule than the teachers themselves. So they came in, we did some troubleshooting. And the schedule that started showing you now will be the, the new and hopefully improved schedule for our fall semester. And again, I emphasize with the teacher, this is a work in progress. It's easy to crush these numbers and try to come up with what we think is going to be best practice. But it's my hope that as we live this schedule, we'll be able to make small changes. For example, if the students, if there's too many students at lunch, women need to adjust sometimes. If the lunch ladies are having a hard time expediting the food, we can add kids in the cafeteria. If we notice uh cluster in the hallways or some sort of issue, we can anticipate the teacher, we're gonna be adept at making those changes. For the best interest of the students. Also, we're kind of running this as a pilot program. If we hit semester and we've noticed some major overarching pain points, we can make changes going into second semester. But the, the major changes you will see is we're going back, kind of back to the future, but back to basics. So we're implementing a bell schedule. Again, uh, because a pain point that we all kind of acknowledged was. We didn't have bells anymore and students were kind of free roaming and coming into classes late and can't maximize seat time when you can't count for your students. So we are implementing a three-minute bell schedule, which in our school is more than adequate to be able to get where you need to go. Um, if you have to use a restroom or something, you still get to pass and for the restroom, it's gonna take longer. Um, but that's still, it retains a snack period for high schoolers who have a late lunch. Uh, and overall, we just feel good about it. Bomb TV then can go into the fifth hour slot, it's a little bit longer. So that that, we've allotted for Bomb TV to be played at the regular time, same time every day without taking up anyone's class time. So that's kind of your overarching bell schedule. If you look at the um, I mean, you can, you can. It's kind of a lot to digest, but as you look at all over, you can see that the Wednesdays are different. Only on a full day week when we have innovation hour. So an innovation hour will impact high school and middle school a little bit differently. But we met with all of the teachers today and actually Lori, Star and Josh, led that meeting um with the teachers. Kind of did some troubleshooting with teachers and overall, it felt like it was a fairly positive response. You know, nobody likes change, but it seemed to embrace.
This is definitely working again.
Tomorrow.
All right.
So when the students come to uh the gym in the morning, Mr. Hannah and I will go over the new bell schedule. Make sure all students have a copy in hand before they leave the gym. I mean, teachers will just help them on the do that throughout the day. And it is our hope that uh Mr. Hartz will be able to um have the bells set, so we'll actually be running on bells again tomorrow. The other major change that I've instituted this year is we will be taking attendance again every hour. We had gotten away from attendance every hour because of the flex schedule. However, when a parent called asking if their kid arrives safely to school or anticipating any possible potential disaster. God forbid, uh, it's very important for me to be able to account where students are at all times. So we're just re-implementing that attendance policy so that. Teachers also can benefit from knowing and not worrying about if their students post being class or not.
So Zach on that, with disasters, do we have the fire drills, take cover drills all scheduled for?
All of those are set for the year. Um, the only one that's still up in the air is our intruder drill. We met as a safety committee today and our officer Sarah Hall is working on. The wordage and language that we're gonna send out to families on what that intruder drill is gonna look like. My goal is by the September board meeting, I have a draft of that for you guys, see if you can look it over. So that if you receive any questions from the committee on what that intruder drill is gonna look like, you'll be able to answer those and then we'll implement that following week. Um, and, and get that intruder drill taken care of. But our tornado drills, our fire drills, those are all set for the year already.
Okay, good. Um, on the intruder drill, we haven't done one before.
We have done them before, but in various forms. Some of them have been minimally invasive where teachers have just gone to the rooms. We've also done them where students have been present, but maybe just stayed in their desks. So we're really working as a safety committee to try to iron out what is best practice, what other schools in our district are doing. And then I'll present that plan to you in September.
Good.
Yeah. Um, it's our goal, you know, obviously we just had a national shooting. Um, that we're most prepared and that we're able to communicate to our parents exactly where our plan is gonna be.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that I'm sure Sarah probably knows is where it's having rally points. Cause you're gonna be exploring with my parents, so you need to be able to tell the parents, this is one of the rally point we'll do.
Yes. Um, the controversial aspect of that is that then you're telling the potential shooter where.
Sure.
That rally point is, but I completely agree with you that we already know and I'll can go over that with you at some point where our exact time is. Um, uh, then uh, any questions on the bell schedule?
What were we using last year?
The bell schedule?
Yeah, the same, using bells what we were using last year.
Just times, uh, they were all fifty-minute class periods that hit the, the five-minute mark.
And, and the way they were set up was like if class started, if second hour ended at ten. It was actually set in the schedule, then the third hour started at ten. And so you would just kind of be like, okay, this is how much time you get to travel.
The tricky spot would be, an example would be, I teach one class every day. Um, and I teach that class until ten AM. So when I'm told I teach a class till ten, my students are in their seats until ten and we're working and you send them on their way. Then they're potentially late for their third hour class because the third hour class expected.
Started at ten.
Passing period. Um, and then you had students who would have used that passing time because they stopped to get snack, went to the bathroom. And there was no bell indicating to any human in the building exactly what time the students were released from that class.
Well, and also all clocks in the building do not necessarily say the exact time.
Right, so just wanted to get back to the basics on some of these fundamental things that will help students regulate themselves and be productive and successful.
Now, is the cafe, cafeteria, the old cafe, is that gonna be open in the morning, all the morning again, or is that gonna be shut down for certain hours in the morning?
So the breakfast will, breakfast will be open until school starts at eight fifteen and then there are snack hours indicated on the schedule. So students will be able to stop during their snack periods. Middle school has a snack and high school has a snack.
Okay.
So after breakfast, the ladies will clean up, get ready for snack, they'll get snacked out. After snack's over, they'll get cleaned up and prep for lunch.
And there were designated times before. It wasn't that it was just open all morning for snacks.
Um, then I just got homecoming on here because it's very early this year, so I wanted all of you to be aware of when that is and what's going on. Uh, Monday, September ninth, homecoming week begins. Who do you think?
Um, four days.
A month.
Um, also though, we are actually beginning on Sunday, the eighth then, with that eight.
Yes.
Sunday, the eighth, um, because normally we would have that parade at ROBA on that day. But because it is egg weekend, egg day, we've kind of incorporated um and modified. So that the tractor parade will make its normal route around the countryside and come back to the school lot. And we will have four hay racks with two of each, ROBA's candidates, our candidates, our attendants, their attendants. And we will parade around the front and then down by the um library and back to the park. And we will actually do coronation at egg day. Which a lot of people are excited about.
So that's on Sunday the eighth.
So that'll be the homecoming parade as well.
There'll be, still be a homecoming parade on, at the fourteenth. If you look on here, we have Monday, September ninth, the homecoming official week at school begins by eight. That egg day will be the launch of that parade. So we'll do our coronation at egg day. Um, then on the ninth, the official school week begins, your home, homecoming week. Thursday will be uh your uh like a redo coronation. That's still on the calendar. I don't know if we're still gonna re-coronate.
I don't think, I didn't think it was. I think what is happening then is Thursday is the powder puff.
It's the powder puff at seven.
And then the bonfire.
Yeah.
And then they're just going to do the pep assembly on Friday and the parade, the big parade at ROBA. Like ROBA did before we combined.
ROBA thinks we're still doing like a re-coronation that evening, so we'll just have to see.
Okay.
But um, just so you know, that all happens at the, at ROBA uh on Thursday. And Friday is the parade at ROBA and then Saturday is the homecoming dance here. So we did it all work out.
It does, it would always work out. Any other sponsors and I work well together.
They do. And you guys have had several meetings already, so. Any questions?
Yeah. Can we circle back to the study halls, skip, to skip fee?
Yes.
Because I kind of share Chad's concern here. Is, are there, is there clear criteria? That, I mean, is the PE teacher the one that judges that he's gonna let a student go to do study or is there clear criteria that says? Cause I guess where I'm going is um, say you have a contest first thing in the morning tomorrow. And you can be right after school and not get it back to wait, need to study for test. Who makes the judgment call whether to allow that student?
Our PE teachers are very, it's a common practice that our PE teachers are very flexible about. None of them have ever protested.
If the student needs that.
So there's not a scenario you would see where a student makes a request?
We call it a polar area. It's a common polar area for our students.
Typically, the teacher will make the request.
But if there were some issue, then they'll come to me and say, hey, can you help me navigate this, this situation and then I communicate with PE team. And they, I can't think of the time that they have ever.
Yeah.
Made that difficult.
Okay.
Not ever. Um, and with our IEP minutes for our students, it's a commonplace where we need to find intervention time for kids. And that's one of the number one places that we look to provide that intervention time. So they're very used to that practice.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. All right, number seven, uh, for each individual action items. A through N, it's gonna be an individual vote. So on action item seven A. And this should just be uh, yea or nay. This does not have to be roll call vote. Is that correct, Ralph? I believe that's correct.
I would recommend a roll call vote.
Okay.
I will move to hire my crew camp as a junior high school baseball coach.
I'll second.
Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
I have a yes. For action item B.
I will make a motion to consider that they have found an important male in this school in Bushfield.
I'll second.
Good. Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
And I have a yes. Action item C.
I move to consider the adoption of FY 2025's end of budget for Williamsville District to count.
Can I ask the question before we go? So on, when we, if we accept this motion here on the tentative budget, are there any options to modify that before we actually?
Oh yeah, it'll be adjusted all the way up until the budget hearing. Cause I, I, I worked this afternoon on a, a cash flow sheet from ISBE. Um, and I'm anticipating we will have some pretty solid decent figures to develop some trends. By the end of the first quarter, which would be the end of September. So, yeah, you can.
We'll still learn us in like the low hanging fruit we talked about.
Oh yeah.
Maybe, and I know you're.
Sure. Mm-hmm. So this is, will be adjusted all the way up until the, the budget hearing.
Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
I have a yes. Action item D.
I'm going to consider a form of Katie Inglis' motion involving our coach.
I'll second.
Wes, you second. Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
And I have a yes. Action item E.
I will make a motion to establish a budget hearing on September fifteenth, seven PM at Lady Book S A Two Ten Office. And the hearing will be held in Cat Conference Room.
Second.
Brittany and.
Brian. Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
I have a yes. Action item F.
I'll make a motion to, I've heard of a recent burnout, it was a school to your assistant softball coach.
Second.
Wes.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
I have a yes.
Can I ask a question before we do? Uh, the others, G through N, or G through N. How many, do we normally have this many volunteers?
No.
No.
This seems excessive, doesn't it?
I agree. We typically have lots of volunteers.
Coaches?
But we've never approved this many. But people would come in and just do, hey, will you come in and help us with a hitting clinic?
Uh-huh.
I think one of the benefits is that, I asked Ralph, we had a couple of people coming in to the office and they're volunteers. Um, I said, Ralph should be, they bring these to the board so that you guys know, cause they should be fingerprinted and they should be, you guys should be aware of who's working with our kids. It's possible that in the past, our volunteers just weren't being official. I mean, we've always had volunteers. I just kind of uh, well, I just thought, oh, you guys should see their names.
I don't remember why we've all ever had any six volunteers. Well.
They don't come, they don't necessarily come to the games, but they would come like Lori said Cathy come in before and hey, we'll do a hitting. Practice with us. So it's that kind of thing.
Okay. Then that leads me to question, why do we have recent graduates coming in?
Because they are college players.
Not. Okay, so college.
And they have, and they help.
But no, we're.
College season is right now, so there's no time for them to come in. So that doesn't make sense.
Wow. I think we just keep moving down the list.
Okay.
Yeah, we've always had, I guess, that many, it just, maybe we've never seen it as such on paper. Yeah. Do we always approve them before they were hired by the board or approved by the board?
Volunteers.
Yeah, so they've, they've already done and done their fingerprints before they're even approved them.
That's why.
Well, they've never done the fingerprints for the volunteers.
That's something that.
All right, we're just gonna keep moving down the list.
Okay.
Action item G.
I'll move to Brittany, Tony, Larry, volunteer assistant softball coach.
What'd you say? Are we on G?
You said G. Just G.
He's for softball.
Okay. Did you say Johnny Ward? I just hear it wrong. Thank you.
I just hear it wrong, thank you. Give my name, it's gonna be yours.
In a second.
I'll second.
Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
I'll have to abstain from that.
April?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. H.
I'll make a motion to approve Lexi Little as a volunteer for volleyball.
I'll second.
Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a no.
Okay.
I.
I will make a motion to approve Jamie Chatter as a volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
Second.
Brittany. Was that Brian?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah.
April?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. A motion on action item J.
I'll make a motion to approve Kathy White as a volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
Okay.
Lizzie Johnston as a volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
I'll second.
Wes? You guys' voices close together and sounds kind of like. You might have to tell me your name when you do it.
Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Or I'm sorry, I'm a yes. I'm a yes. This is a lot.
J, K, and one K.
All right, K.
Motion to approve Kathy White as a volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
I'll second that.
Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Lexi.
Setunis.
Setunis as a volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
I'll second.
And Jennifer and.
Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah.
April?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I should grow my beard back.
Action item. Yeah, right? Action item M.
I will motion for Chloe Seacrest as a volunteer assistant volleyball coach.
A second.
Wes?
Yes.
And Jenny? Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah.
April?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Last one.
I'll make a motion to approve an increase in baseball and softball on higher fees, $5 per game.
And I will second that.
Can I ask a question? What, what is it become, what is it today?
Uh, 20, 20 or 25.
Okay, so it becomes 25 or 25?
Brian?
How come we're not the volleyball? Or basketball?
That would have to be a question.
He didn't ask.
Oh.
Can you amend the motion? I mean, if we want.
Amended to the increase?
No, to add, you said add volleyball.
Oh, I just wondered why it wasn't on there. And they haven't asked, apparently.
I would, I'd, I'd wait, I can find that out for you and see what the athletic director recommends.
Trying to save money, Brian, come on.
No, you can ask the question.
I don't know, $5, man, that's. Let go, let go of my arm. Ouch. Jack Benny over here.
You got a second, Wes?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yeah.
April?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Jenny?
Yes.
All right, we moved through that. Now on to action, our item number eight, the finance committee update.
I'm actually going to amend this, explain the issues that we have with amended budget and our deficit.
Uh, yeah, we had some issues where the amended budget was rejected because there was one fund that was in negative. Uh, I did talk to our auditors and they gave me a suggestion on how to remedy it, which I did, and sent it back to the state board. I have not heard back from them yet. Um, and then we've had some issues with the S R 3 grant um, because of the lack of delivery for a bus. And uh, we also had some issues where there was a couple of funds that were in negative balance. So I'm looking forward to working with the auditors when they come in and I will have harder figures for you by the end of the first quarter. I will tell you this, I think it's probably time that we start looking at reconfiguring our cost structure, uh, investigating ways where we can recapture lost revenue and also ways where we can boost revenue. Uh, we did talk about the fact that um, I am not a tax and spend superintendent. Uh, I believe, and I, I know all of you share this as well, because I've talked to all of you, that we levy for need and not for want. It's very important, especially, uh, and I know you all agree with me on this, is I, and as well as you are, are very sensitive that a big percentage of our tax base is agriculture. And right now, uh, the commodities market is very depressed. Uh, so, you know, we have to be very good stewards of our, of our tax base and, and as we all sit and trust to the taxpayers.
I didn't think our finances were that terrible. I was very shocked. It was being combed through.
It's, it's a, there's a, a lot of expenses and not enough revenue to cover them. And this is not something that's going to be inherently specific to Williamsville? Williamsfield, I'm sorry. Uh, it's been a long day, I'll be honest with you. This is something that's going to happen all across Illinois, if not the country. Uh, you know, we had inflation shoot up to 9%. It's still uh, at 4%. Um, Brian, you guys, Caterpillar probably watched that closer than I do, but it's still pretty high. And as a result, uh, employers and taxing bodies um, had to balance pay increases with inflation costs. Uh, now that the inflation's starting to go down, it's going to be a challenge for all taxing bodies and businesses to pay for those costs. Uh, and I'm not criticizing anybody. Uh, I, I, I think teachers and workers and, and people that work for taxing bodies need to have a fair wage. And it's pretty hard when you're looking at 9% inflation and um, and you can't pay the bills, so. We'll get beyond it, it's going to be a challenge. Uh, and we're going to have to make some sacrifices, uh, but I think we can get beyond it.
Hey Ralph, I know we talked about it in the finance committee, you said boost revenue, that refers to taking out a bond or?
Yes, I have a meeting, and April and I have a meeting tomorrow with Stiefel and Nicholas. They have a representative and we're going to investigate ways on where we can take out a bond, uh, possibly to get us through this. Any questions?
No, I just really appreciate how much you're digging into this. I think the finance committee meeting was very informative for a lot of us, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's what I'm here for, you know, and, and I appreciate working with all of you because it's, I mean, I feel like I'm on the same uh, philosophy on funding schools. Uh, and that's, that's important.
I know it wasn't easy, but thank you for helping clear that out.
Well, it's, I mean, it, it's, it's, it is what it is. And like I said, it's not going to be inherently specific just to, to Williamsfield. It's, these things are happening all over the country, so.
Any other questions or discussion on finance? All right, item number nine.
I will make a motion for a closed session. The item on closed session, specific performance of a specific employee of a public body in this discussion. Probably will lead to a case that I can, I'll have to say.
Wes?